Wait, what's this waster? Wait, wait.
Good evening. Welcome to the December 5th meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order at this time. The first item on the agenda is to determine, to approve the minutes of the November 7th, 2012 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If none, I will approve them as submitted. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have one item under the consent agenda tonight, that is a mandatory referral for a drainage easement on property located north of Joe B. Jackson Parkway and west of Manchester Highway. Denny Hastings is the developer. Is there anybody on the Planning Commission, on the staff, or in the audience tonight that'd like this item removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Move for approval, Chairman.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. We have four items under the public hearings tonight, the first of which is a zoning application for approximately 19.5 acres located along New Last Cassis Highway to be rezoned from PUD to RZ. Investment Partners LLC is applicant. Mr. Adelot or Ms. Ealy? Which one?
I'll handle this one.
Ms. Ealy, thank you.
I'll introduce it. Mr. Adelot may have some additional comments, but our first public hearing this evening is to consider a zoning change for property located along Last Cassis Pike, and if the cable department puts the map on the screen, you can see it's the area that's shaded blue on the map before you. The property is currently zoned PUD, Plan Unit District, and it was zoned such in 2007 as a part of the Emerald Place Plan Development. The properties that are located directly to the north contiguous with the subject area are zoned RZ, which are zero lot line residential district, and this request is also to zone this property, RZ. The properties that are located along the western property line are zoned RS-15, Single Family Residential District, and are developed single-family lots located along Pitts Lane. Properties to the south are either a part of the PUD, commercial portions of the PUD, which include a developed self-storage center, and also a site for a Sonic. I know that that Sonic was approved several years ago. I've recently been contacted by the developer of the Sonic, who's interested in now that I think the economy's in a little better situation, interested in pursuing that plan and actually set up a meeting with him to go over what would be required. So although there's no Sonic there, I expect that there will be one in the near future. And just south of that is property zoned CF, which is Commercial Fringe District and location of grocery store, retail stores, and restaurant. Across the street, there's property zoned PCD, and it's probably familiar to you because the Kroger is located there, and they've also made an application to change their zoning from PCD to CH, and that was the subject of one of our previous meetings. And to the north of the Kroger, some properties zoned RS-12 and PUD and a part of the Garrison Cove, Single Family subdivision. The owner of this property that we're looking at today, that's the blue shaded property, has requested for a portion of that PUD, the Emerald Place PUD, be rezoned from Plan Unit District to RZ, Residential Zero Lot Line District. He's indicated that his plan is to construct single-family detached dwellings similar to those that you see in the villages at Garrison Cove, although with the zoning plan, we wouldn't look at that specific plan yet. Currently, the plan development calls for this to be developed as a 61 dwelling unit condominium development on 15.8 acres, and then a portion of it is a part of the retail component, so that's why it's 19.5 acres. It includes the 15.8 acre residential condo portion and a 2.6 acre commercial portion. The applicant, I've included in your agenda materials one of the excerpts from the program book that shows the concept plan that was approved in 2007, which is of course the zoning plan for this property, and you can see what was anticipated at that time. The, I believe there's a representative for the applicant in the audience, I'm not sure if they're, they've prepared a presentation, or where is it? Over there? I think Mr. Bill Huddleston, if he has a few things to say before we open the public hearing. Afterwards, you should conduct a public hearing before formulating your recommendation to council regarding this zoning change request.
Mr. Huddleston, before you start, for members of the Planning Commission, 5A and 5B are reversed on our agenda based on what's loaded in our iPad, so just make note of that. Move over to 5B.
Mr. Huddleston.
Sir.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Bill Huddleston with President of Huddleston Steel Engineering here in Murfreesboro. I'm here on behalf of Investment Partners, which is made up of Bobby Kirby and Jewel Hale, who are here in the audience tonight. They have a great track record, as you know, for developing properties around the city of Murfreesboro. Tonight, we're asking to change the part of the PUD zoning to an RZ zoning, and that's the exact zoning of the property that abuts us to the north. The original PUD had a commercial strip center along with 61 condominium units in basically four unit buildings for this area, and what we're proposing is an RZ zoning. These will not be zero lot lines, it'll be single-family detached housing with side setbacks, more in keeping with the area. We brought to you a few years back a proposal to develop multifamily apartments in this area, and the residents were very much opposed to that in the area, and we heard loud and clear that they would much rather prefer single-family, so that's what we're proposing tonight. The focal point of this development will be the bridge still that we talked about before. We'll have a pretty good-sized bridge coming into the development, so we'll be spending some money to make, to dress that up and put a lot of stone on it, so hence the name we're going to call this Rock Bridge when we develop it, or if we're able to develop it as a single-family subdivision. There will be some brick and stone on the houses. We will match the minimum square footage next door, which is 1,600 square feet. We'll have asphalt-to-concrete drives, mailboxes with wrought iron posts, and so basically we're going to be matching the villages of Garrison Cove next door, but it's going to be a brand-new development. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions, or I can wait till after the public hearing.
Ms. Huddleston, what are your traffic projections?
For 71 detached units, generally for a single-family development, you generate 10 trips a day per unit, so that's 710 daily trips, which is very low. In the peak hour, which is your most heavily traveled times, you say 10 percent, so you're down to about 70 trips in the peak hour, which if they were all going out, that'd only be about one every minute, so very low traffic count, much lower than what would be generated by the approved PUD in this area, which is 61 condo units plus the commercial strip center.
Do you recall what the figures were for that?
I do not, but they're much more than what this would be.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Huddleston.
Thank you.
Before we open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules that we conduct our public hearing by. We'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak either for or against a proposal. Come to the microphone, state your name, and give your address, please. Keep your comments, no more than three minutes, and make all your questions, make all your questions to the Planning Commission. If you do have questions, the staff will make a note of those and try to answer those at the conclusion of the public hearing. With all that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I feel like we're becoming old friends up here. I may try to get one of you guys' jobs. I'm here that often lately.
You might be welcome to it, Mr. Jones.
I think so. The first thing I'd like to do, there's two-
Name and address, please.
Jim Jones, 2203 Garrison Cove.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
No problem. I would like to, first of all, correct something that Mr. Huddleston said. When we were here about the apartments, we did not say we wanted 71 or 81 single-family housings. We said we were happy with the 61 condominiums and the commercial area. That's what we, that's what we had agreed to, not anything else. So I want you all to be aware that at that point, we didn't agree to housing. The second thing is that my understanding is that we are supposed to be notified if we're within so much distance of the property by either mail or by something in a mailbox or something. So far, none of us that I know of that are within the range have been notified at all. Having said that, I will continue. I moved to Garrison Cove in 1996, and I'm very proud of our community. It has stood the test of time. Our quadrant has Anatol, it has Huntington Place, it has Marabella, it has the beautiful homes a lot, Pitts Lane, even concludes Stratford Hall. All of these are very well-developed, very well-run, very proud-of-ownership communities. We have stood the presence of four schools. We have also four large, four or five large churches in the community along Last Cassis Highway. We have also, which has brought a lot of traffic into the area, along with Krogers and all of that. Last Cassis Highway is a state road. I don't believe, from what Joseph has said, that any time within my lifetime, that road's going to be widened. There's already been a ruling on a traffic light there, and they have said no because the traffic light down at Memorial is too close to the traffic light they put either at Garrison Cove or across from this place. So I don't think there's a shot at that. The traffic from 71 homes, I think it means approximately 200 cars, you know? That's what my estimate would be, based, looking at our subdivision, looking at the villages of Garrison Cove. That's an additional 200 cars, probably 150 of them coming out of one entrance, not two or three entrances, just one entrance. I think that we have tried to maintain, and we are here as a group most of the time to maintain the integrity of our community. We're very proud of it there, and we just don't see, I don't know how to put this, but just to be blunt, when I saw this, I really was, really looked at it and said, all that is, if someone took and drew a bunch of squares and said, "How many houses can we fit on this property?" They didn't have any concern about anything else. I mean, it's just, "How many can I put there?" You know, and the more I put, probably the more money I make. I think there's a need for the 61 condominiums. I've talked to a few of my neighbors, myself. I'm of an age when I'm looking to downsize to a nice one. A lot of my neighbors are, a lot of my friends are. I would look very seriously at that 61 condominiums, townhouse condominiums across the street, you know? I really would, and I think a lot of people would. I think there's a value there now with the aging of our group. I recommend and I request that you do not approve this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I'm Helen Calvin, 2202 Garrison Cove, the first house on the right off Last Cassis, right across the street from Jim and Carol. First of all, just so you'll know, I know you all are missing Marcy Richmond here tonight. She wanted you to know that she couldn't be here, but she's here in spirit. When you look in Wikipedia and you look up zoning, you find a statement that reads, quote, "Theoretically, the primary purpose of zoning is to segregate uses that are thought to be incompatible. In practice, zoning is used to prevent new development from interfering with existing residents and businesses and to preserve the character of the community," end quote. When our area began to be developed, there was a plan. The homeowners of Garrison Cove relied on this plan to help us protect our investment and our quality of life. At the time that Kroger was being developed, a number of us met with the folks that were looking at these townhomes. We liked this plan, we thought it was very appropriate and very compatible with our Very nice condos, we thought it would be good. We thought it would be an extremely marketable plan as well. Now, we all know that we've experienced difficult economic times. They've affected all of us. However, we do not need to give back a short-term solution that will compound a long-term problem. Not very long ago, there was a proposal to build apartments in this area. The commission had the wisdom to deny that change. Now the proposal is for a large number of homes without any amenities, and if I'm looking at this plan correctly, and I believe I am, there's only one ingress and regress. And at the time that Kroger was developed, we were told that this was really good, that our subdivision was now going to have multiple ingress and regress because they were being required in new areas. So that is a question I would like answered. We do not believe in having a plan and then changing it on every whim that comes along. We need things that we can count on, and we don't need to have to continue to defend our property constantly, and we really like condos, we really don't like the current proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Calvin.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, Council. My name is Melody Holton. I live at 2315 Garrison Cove. I am a new face to this, and I just wanted to support what our homeowners association has, has come forward to, to talk to you about. I agree with, with everything they've said. And I had a few comments. I lived here 10 years ago from New Orleans, and I moved into Garrison Cove because they had a strong homeowners association. We didn't have that strong associations in New Orleans area. As, New Orleans has a lot of good things about it, but if you've ever visited there, you know that their planning is not very, there's not a lot of fourth thought. So I appreciate everything that our homeowners association has done to maintain the value of our homes, and I want to continue to try to keep that in place. We strongly believe that condominiums are something that's needed in our area, and a planned community development, PUD, would be much more in keeping with the area that we are in, and the traffic issues and all of the things that have been mentioned previously. I would just like for you to consider those things and consider the fact that we, we would like to maintain our home values. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holton.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb and Planning Commission members. I'm Lee Shortridge, and I live at 2013 Look Rock Court in Garrison Cove. Excuse me. We've lived in Garrison Cove for 15 years and watched the growth of our subdivision into one of the premier places in Murfreesboro. I want to preserve the status of Garrison Cove while at the same time protect the value of our home. Therefore, I'm against the Emerald Place rezoning from PUD to RZ, and I fully support the comments made by my three fellow homeowners. Change is inevitable. I recall the meetings we had in 2006 with Old South and the Planning Department as our HOA negotiated changes to the proposed Kroger and Higgins Lane rezoning. Then a few years ago, our HOA met with the Planning Department to protect, again protect, the best interest of Garrison Cove pertaining to the condos on the subject Last Cassis site currently zoned PUD. That request was modified somewhat and was subsequently approved by the Planning Commission. Currently, we're working with Kroger through Bill Huddleston on details for another zoning change that's going to be abutting Garrison Cove and have some impact on our subdivision. As you probably know, the approved condo site has been dormant ever since its approval. A short time ago, the Planning Commission rejected a developer's request, request to build apartments on the site. At the public hearing, several homeowners from Garrison Cove, Pitts Lane, and the villages at Garrison Cove spoke against the request. Now here comes a request to rezone from PUD to RZ to allow zero lot line houses. I know Bill said it was not zero lot line houses, it's like the villages in Garrison Cove, but if you drive through the villages at Garrison Cove and you see how close together those houses are, that's my understanding of zero lot line. It doesn't mean two feet between the houses, but believe me, they're tight. This request, I think, has bailout written all over it. The recession probably ruled out Plan A, which was the condos. Plan B, the apartments, was appropriately rejected by this Planning Commission. Now here comes Plan C, zero lot line houses. As I see it, you have an important choice to make tonight. Either endorse the concerns of the tax-paying homeowners of Garrison Cove by rejecting the proposed zoning change to RZ, or bail out the developer. We strongly urge rejection. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Southridge. Anybody else?
Bob Yates, 2340 Pitts Lane. As I said, this has got to be kind of an annual or semi-annual deal. You know, we got to know everybody pretty good. I live on Pitts Lane, I, my property backs up to this, and we knew it was inevitable, they were going to do something with it, but we didn't want the apartments and so forth, so we felt like the townhomes or condominiums was the best alternative. So we kind of liked that, and you all approved it, that's fine. They came back, of course, with apartments because of hard times supposedly, and we, you all voted those down, which we appreciate. They're coming back now with RZ, which if you'll think about it, they've never broke ground on anything, and when they get RZ, it'll really surprise me if they break ground on that either. They're not in the building business, they're in the developing business. So they get RZ approved. We'll see you again, year, two year from now. Well, we're already RZ, that's not very far from apartments, so let's go back to apartments now. Well, that's out, we're not here to see, but that's kind of the way we feel because they just keep on trying to do a little bit more and a little bit more, and we think the condos is the best of the worst, so we would like to stay with that and hopefully stay with PUD. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yates.
Hi, my name is Dorothy Murphy. I live at 2371 Pitts Lane and also own the house at 2351 Pitts Lane. And I think sort of what I'm, what I came to say is sort of what everybody's been saying. Several years ago, we got together at the elementary school at the end of Pitts Lane and had a meeting, because this area was all RS-15, and we came up with a plan. Of course, we're homeowners, we really honestly didn't want the storage units either, but we had to agree to something, and Joseph encouraged us, "You all are going to have to agree to something." So we did. We agreed to those, and we agreed to the condos. You know, would we have rather had it stay RS-15? Absolutely. But, but we compromised, and we made an agreement. I guess what everybody's feeling is like, only we made the agreement, because every year we have to come back to revisit the agreement, and it's just frustrating. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. It's just frustrating, because I think we came back December of last year, you know, and spent Wednesday night with you, and we just would like to stop and settle on what we agreed to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Good evening, my name is Sherry Dowdy, and I live at 2381 Oak Hill Drive, which is part of the villages of Garrison Cove, and my property actually backs up to the property that you're looking at rezoning. And I know that when we met, like our other friends were talking about, the meetings that we went through to kind of come to an agreement with the developer and the engineering company, we went over lots of concerns that everyone had, and I'm concerned that those things are just going to fall by the wayside now that we've changed the plan. Mr. Adelot agreed that at the villages of Garrison Cove, we have some issues with drainage. We have issues that we own a subdivision, community-owned pool that we're responsible for legally. There is nothing keeping the people that are in the property that's looking to be rezoned, to keep those residents off of our property and out of our pool, even though we've got it secured as best as we could. Those were some concerns. I mean, it's, we have children, we have a playground area that belongs to our villages of Garrison Cove subdivision. We own it, we pay for it, we're legally responsible. So I'm afraid that those issues are going to be also kind of just, like I said, kind of to the curb if we try to start doing some changes. We looked at some of those things, and some of those things were added in when we discussed those and brought those to Mr. Adelot's attention, and he, he personally told me, "I understand what you're saying, I see that there's a problem, we looked at it on the map." So, you know, if we start doing a lot of changes, like I said, I think that we're going to be left out of the loop. We have been through the apartments, the commercial, and I think that the, the people that spoke for villages of Garrison Cove, we were okay with the condominiums and the concept plan that we finally approved. Looking at the concept plan that was turned in to the Planning Department, I went and looked at it last week, very sketchy, could not see really, there was not much information with it. It was pretty much just house, 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 with nothing else there. So I just hope that we keep that in mind, that we, the residents and the taxpayers, we worked a long time with the Planning Department to come up with an agreement, and I hope that we, we still honor all that hard work that we've already done on this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dowdy. Anybody else?
Good evening, my name's Carl P. Mayfield, I live at 2390 Pitts Lane. My property backs up to the proposed development on the east side. I have about eight acres, a house of approximately 6,000 feet, five-stall horse barn, four-out buildings, and I'm wondering, about half of my property that backs up to the proposed development, I'm wondering about the current stand of trees, the tree line that, that blocks, does a great job of blocking what's been developed already, and the lights, and I think about a Sonic and lighted roller skates and, and all the lights that'll be required for the housing. for the housing and other commercial entities. And that's just something I'd like to have the, perhaps Mr. Huddleston discuss. I remember, and we can call this by proxy, but we've lost a neighbor and a great World War II hero. I happened to notice that sign and thought of Leroy Lowman when I came in, and he asked for people with property backing up to the proposed development to have berms, a berm and a fence. And I believe that was agreed to, and I just wanted to remind you of that if you don't have that on record. And I'd like to say, what, was it Bob?
Jim.
What Bob said. And one other thing, it doesn't have to be now, but before we close the session, I was wondering if Mr. Huddleston would be kind enough and if he would allow him to have the map, or the drawing of what they have planned posted on the flat screens and have him explain, go over. I haven't seen it, so I don't even know what I'm talking about, actually, you know. As it, this plan, I haven't seen this plan. As a lot of residents, I don't know of, I've talked to three people who've got notifications. And again, thanks to everyone who spoke before me, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayfield. Anybody else?
I'm Becky Mayfield, and I know you'd be so disappointed if I didn't get up here. But I want to know, on the single-family dwellings, if there's single-family dwellings, does that mean you can go in one, the front door, and there can be two dwellings inside? That's the question I want to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Chairman Lamb and members of the Commission, my name's Mike Gower, 2130 Lovelace Lane. Most of the folks in the neighborhood surrounding this proposal think that the current zoning is a good zoning plan and a good compromise that was made several years ago. That was confirmed two years ago when you voted against rezoning. I would respectfully ask you to vote again against rezoning this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gower. Would anybody else like to speak?
I hope I'm not last, but maybe not least. But I'm Dale Almond, Preferred Property Management, located at 212 Heritage Park Drive here in Murfreesboro. And I'm here, I did, was present at the last zoning for the apartments, and we were very highly represented. However, due for whatever reason, many of the homeowners, definitely in villages of Garrison Cove, which we manage, were not able to meet because being a church night and also, as had been spoken before, did not get notification for whatever reason. So, I'm here tonight just to, my phone has been ringing and a lot of emails have been coming through over the last two days. And because they're not here, I'm here tonight to represent those homeowners that couldn't be present, to let them know, let their voice be heard, that they are not for the apartments, they're not for the single-family. They do entertain a nice, planned, possibly, hate to say over 55, but a 55 community. They think that would be definitely an asset to the villages of Garrison Cove, Garrison Cove and the other surrounding communities. So, I'm here just to represent those homeowners that decline this proposal, and if you'll take that into consideration, I'll appreciate that on behalf of the homeowners.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Adelot, we had numerous questions brought up that I think you probably need to comment on.
Well, I didn't hear a lot of any questions. I did hear one of them, I heard Ms. Mayfield answer your question. Can you go in one front door and have two dwellings inside? In the RZ classification, the answer is no. Each, how, each, is there a lot, like, it can have a party wall, but each one would be a separate dwelling unit, perhaps have its own separate entrance, its own separate drive, its own separate dwelling complete. We think of zero lot lines sometimes as, well, see, a bell crossing where it is a party wall, but it has to be a separate dwelling and separated in all respects, entrances and utilities, et cetera. I heard a bit about the notification range. I'm not sure the number of notices we sent. I did notice that part of what might have comped the notification to Garrison Cove was the large berms from the common area out front. We sent our notices to all property owners who are listed in the records of both the county, property assessment, all property owners within 250 feet. And looking at that, it looks like that's probably cut some of the Garrison Cove out. But I did have the foresight to at least discuss it with the Owners Association, make sure you knew about me. So, I personally made that contact to make sure that you knew about me. And I did it a couple of times, so you're here. But it does sound like some people behind off Pitts Lane did get those, and some people in the areas of Garrison Cove. So, I'm fairly certain of work. Also, we have a sign post on property. It may have been damaged, but I know it was posted and we did a job to pick it up. And we also advertise in the Murfreesboro cover. So, very certain that the, very certain that the comments make. Is my microphone not working? Well, sure isn't. Right in front of me. Excuse me. I will agree with the owners that spoke. There was a lot of buy-in on that planning and development plan. I was in attendance at a neighborhood meeting. I do know the conversations, and I do believe that there was a buy-in on it. The developers, and of course, they want to do something different. That's their right. Every property owner has a right to ask for a rezoning. And I know Ms. Mayfield and others, you may have mentioned to me how concerned you are about having to come down here and defend your neighborhood. Well, from our standpoint, we're wonderfully glad to see you participating in a process that we've got so that people can help make decisions. So, I look at it, instead of being half-empty, I'm looking at the glass as half-full. This is, that's wonderful opportunity to participate in a process. We need you all, and I really hope that you all are happy in coming. Because when you do vocalize, it does help this body to make a decision because it is your neighborhood. So, please, the next time we have a public hearing, don't give up. Come on down. We want everybody to participate because it does help us to know what is in your mind. Otherwise, we don't. So, I don't, I don't want you to feel bad about coming, and we certainly are glad to see you. We always welcome you to our meetings, even if you're not on the agenda. Was there anything in particular that you all heard that you wanted me to respond to? I heard some very definite questions. I think I answered those.
The last speaker alluded to something about a 55 and up community. Was that ever a part of the agenda for the approved project?
No, I don't think it was mentioned as a commitment to that, but I think they were talking about that as having some of the amenities that would be attractive to that demographic. So, I don't, I don't think that was ever written hard into the planning development. One thing I will assure you, the planning development still is intact. Until the City Council adopts an ordinance to change the zoning, the current zoning is still intact, and all the commitments that are written into it are still there.
Okay. I think most of these other questions I had made note of here probably needs to be addressed by Mr. Huddleston. So, Mr. Huddleston, if you could take the stand and go ahead with your proposal, and we'll see if you cover everything.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Lamb. And we appreciate the residents' concern. We do have been meeting fairly often and appreciate the opportunity to get to meet with them. One thing that was brought up was the traffic. This plan generates less traffic than what's proposed in the PUD. Now, the property owners, well, one thing, one thing that I think is getting lost in this discussion, we're talking about 71 single-family units. That is replacing 61 condo units plus 25,000 to 35,000 square feet of retail. I think, it seems to have gotten lost that we're doing away with the retail here also. Now, these property owners, Bobby Kirby and Jewel Hale, they've owned this property for, I don't know, seven or eight years. Believe me, if condos would work here, these guys can get it done. Condos would not work here. Now, we did hear from a lot of Garrison Cove people, and rightfully so, their concern about what they're going to see, what's going to be across the street. Basically, what they're going to see is a nice bridge. There's good separation from the highway back to this development, and we're going to make sure we have a nice bridge between that, and that's what they will be looking at. Mr. Mayfield asked about the trees along the property line. Those will remain. We want to keep those trees also. They bring value to our property as they do his property. He asked about the lights. This project will have less lighting than four-unit buildings and 25,000 to 35,000 square feet of retail. He asked about the plan. I don't know if Ms. Ely can pull up the plan. I'm happy to share our plan with it, with them, with the neighbors, with Mr. Mayfield. It's a, I'm sure you'll understand, it's a work in progress. If you approve our zoning, or if you recommend our zoning to be approved at City Council, and we get that approval at council, we have to come back to Planning Commission with a preliminary plat. Then, we have to get construction plans approved by staff, and then we come back to you with a final plat. So, you will have plenty of opportunity to provide comments and recommend revisions to the plan as we go forward. And Mr. Adelot did answer the question about there will only be one dwelling in each of these units.
Ms. Huddleston, I know it's premature to talk too much about elements that will be addressed in the slide plan approval, but Mr. Mayfield brought up tree line screening, berms and fence and that type of thing. Do you know in advance what the intentions are there?
With the single-family development, we propose dealing with the property line as we do on other single-family developments, which is leaving the tree line as it is. We do not have any berms or additional fencing proposed.
Mr. Wade?
What about a mix?
Please, please, excuse me. We cannot have any comments from the audience, please, at this time. Thank you, Mr. Wade.
Will there be any amenities in this?
No, sir, there will not be outside amenities. For only 71 houses, it would be hard to get a viable homeowners association that could pay to keep up with those amenities.
How many acres are involved?
Nineteen and a half.
Ms. Jones.
Mr. Huddleston, just a couple of questions. Just in general, the condos won't work, and that would be, I take it they would have worked before originally when the original plan came through? And is it just strictly a difference in price values of what you could sell it for now versus what would have happened before?
The idea of the condos was something that developers thought would work, but once they got to marketing them, they didn't find a market for condos over there.
And one more question. In the, we're talking about 71 lots or 71 units, total, 71 total units?
Both. It'll be one unit on each lot.
It's not going to be one of these lots that then later gets divided into an A and a B?
That's correct. It is a one, single-family unit detached on each lot.
Max 71 units.
That's correct. And a lot of the lots are larger, too. They're not all just small squares is what was indicated.
Other questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Huddleston, how much square footage was proposed in the commercial aspect of this?
It was around 30,000, somewhere between 25,000 and 35,000 square feet of retail was proposed in the original PUD, and we are doing away with that with this proposal.
Actually, my records indicated it was 40,434 square feet on four acres.
Even larger. Your memory's always been better than mine. Okay.
He has better notes. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Huddleston, from members of the Planning Commission?
One more question.
Sure.
At the development of whatever this is, whenever it is, is that going to push the numbers up to have a light at that intersection of Garrison Cove?
No, sir. This is a very low-traffic generator. It will not increase the possibility of a signal there.
There may be some people that disagree with the low, low traffic, but the question I'm asking is, will this tip this over to let them have a light?
It will not because our side will always be much less than the Garrison Cove side. They experience higher traffic, but evidently not high enough to warrant a signal. But ours will never be that high.
Even with the commercial aspect of it?
That's correct. We did a traffic study previously, and it didn't generate enough to warrant a signal.
The previous study with condos and the commercial entity, just, do you recall what those traffic counts were?
I do not. I know what condos would be, but I don't know right off the top of my head what the retail would be, but it would be much greater than this.
And just to make sure, the condos, there were 61 condos?
Correct.
And now, we're looking at 71 single-family detached?
Right. There were 61 condos and four-unit buildings plus the 40,000 square feet of commercial. We're taking all that land and just going to have 71 houses.
Thank you, Ms. Huddleston. The purpose of, no, ma'am, the purpose of this public hearing tonight is for the City, for the City Planning Commission to make a recommendation to City Council. And so, it's up for a motion, either for or against this recommendation. So, either discussion from members of the Planning Commission or a motion, please.
Chairman Lamb, you know, I'd just like to say that I really appreciate what all the neighbors have had to say tonight, and I also appreciate the track record that these developers have had in the community. They've had a lot of good effect in a lot of areas of town. But I certainly think what the neighbors have had to say tonight and the hard work that went into the original plan that's being asked to be changed doesn't merit change, and I would move for denial.
Second motion.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to the next public hearing tonight, it'll be the item B on our agenda, zoning application for approximately eight acres along Memorial Boulevard north of Cedar View Drive to be rezoned from RS-15 to Commercial Highway. Mr. Ray T. Patton is applicant. Ms. Ely?
Thank you, sir. Our second public hearing this evening is to consider a rezoning of some property that's located along the eastern side of Memorial Boulevard, also known as Highway 231, and north of Cedar View Drive. The property is currently zoned RS-15 in that single-family residential district and was zoned such when it was annexed. The city's zoning ordinance has a requirement that unless there's companion zoning change request, any property zoned for any type of residential purposes in the county would automatically be, automatically be zoned RS-15, of course, without that application. So, because there was no request to change the zoning when the annexation was requested, it's zoned RS-15. That annexation was initiated by the property owner who had a desire to, a desire to utilize city services. The mobile home park was existing, which is currently on site. I think they wanted to use city services. The property is located south of property that's zoned CH and RM16. That property, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for recently to zone it from single-family to CH and RM16. It's known as the Gerald property, the, was immediately adjacent to it. The properties that are to the south are zoned PCD, and that's Planned Commercial District, and that's for Regal Square. and that's for Regal Square, which is a commercial subdivision. We've seen, it's currently underdeveloped, and I think the development's sort of slow, but we are seeing the sites develop as time passes. And so the, with the development of Regal Square, a portion of Cedar View Drive was closed. So this property does have access to Cedar View Drive, but to access Regal Drive, they're required to go through that PCD. So they'll have to drive east and then come back down, and that's to a signalized intersection. The property also has a small portion of its property contiguous with Memorial Boulevard, and you can see that as the appendage, the purple appendage on the map. Properties to the east are zoned RS-15, and I think there are a couple of single-family houses on those large lots, which were developed in the county and also subsequently annexed later. The property, as it is now, is zoned RS-15 and has a mobile home park on it. A mobile home park is not a permitted use within that RS-15 district. However, it's considering as an established non-conforming use. As time has progressed, less and less mobile homes have been on that property, and the owner contemplates that a buyer of the property would desire to be able to redevelop the property in a commercial manner compatible with the commercial zoning that is now established to the north of the Gerald estate property and along the front at the intersection of Cedar View Drive. The property that you see with the CL, Zone CL, immediately adjacent to this property, used to be the location of a motel, and just south of that is a gas station and liquor store. So that's west on the corner of Cedar View Drive and Memorial Boulevard. Let's see. I don't, I'm not sure if there is representative of the applicant here this evening. I don't know.
Yes, Mr. Bratcher.
Mr. Bratcher's here, and I think he'd like to introduce the application himself. And afterward, you should conduct a public hearing before deciding whether to recommend approval, denial, or deferral of this item. Mr. Bratcher?
Would you like to introduce yourself to this body, sir?
I think I will. I'm Chris Bratcher. I am here representing Mr. Patton, who's the owner. He's also present tonight. I am at 522 Uptown Square. I am a Realtor at Red Realty. Mr. Patton has owned this property for approximately 25 years, and it's been a mobile home park. It's been a mobile home park, I think, for approximately 35 years. Mr. Patton desires to sell this property and have it redeveloped in a commercial manner, and with the property that's been rezoned around it. Mr. Patton has reached the age of his life, and his health is declining, so he wishes to market this property. So we'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have, either me or Mr. Patton.
I see no questions. Thank you, Mr. Bratcher.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb.
I'll open the public hearing this time, and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions by members of this commission?
Seeing none, Chairman Lamb, I recommend approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 5C, the right-of-way abandonment request for approximately 1,350 linear feet of Beasley Road, north of Warrior Drive. Charles P. Mitchell is applicant. Ms. Ely? Mr. Adalot?
Yes, sir. The subject property is located just to the north of Warrior Drive. It's a street that has been partially constructed, but it has been dedicated as a public right-of-way. This street dates back to the time when the interchange was constructed, and it was built as an access road to the property in behind, formerly owned by the Loy family. The applicant who owns this, the property on each side of Beasley Road, he and his partners have purchased that property, and he and his wife own the property at the end of Beasley Road. They have in mind to really come up with a different development plan, and they would like to have an opportunity to see the street deeded back to them, so that they'll have the flexibility to change its alignment and relocate it for a better development plan. Also, the street has never been completed. The city continues to hold several hundred thousand dollars of surety for its eventual construction. We would just as soon give the surety back if he, and deed the right-of-way back to him. From a staff perspective, we believe that would be a better alternative. This application has been made for mandatory referral. Staff is in agreement with moving forward, as we've outlined in the staff comments, and with the agreement that he, his attorney have drafted in concert with our city attorney, Assistant City Attorney. What you need to do is, because this is a street right-of-way abandonment enclosure, and it's gonna involve a little unusual situation, instead of deeding the right-of-way to the adjacent property owner that he owns with his partners, we want it, he wants it deeded directly to the land he owns with his wife, so that his property that would otherwise be landlocked will become a flaglot, and it will have legal access and will be a conforming parcel. It will still be served by utilities. So we need to conduct a public hearing. I'd be glad to answer your questions. This is one of the more complicated right-of-ways I've been involved with in my tenure with the city, and I think Mr. Ives has said it's probably one of the more complicated ones he's been involved with as an attorney. And I will tell you also, and I say this very truly, the city staff has spent an inordinate amount of time working on this street, and we would just as soon see it go into a different status.
Go away.
I would like to add that I think this is one of the projects that came onto my desk very early, when I joined the city in 2006. So, yeah, we've all spent a lot of time on it.
Back when you had dark hair, and Mr. Adalot didn't wear glasses.
That's right.
Okay. Anything else from the members of the staff of the planning commission before we open the public hearing? I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to come forward? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. We're open for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The final public hearing tonight is an ordinance amendment to amend the zoning ordinance, Section 24, Article 5, PS, planned signage, signage overlay district, subsection D, regarding flag signs. Planning staff is the applicant. Mr. Adalot?
Yes, sir. The public hearing we're gonna conduct now, in the matter of business, is to consider an amendment to our zoning ordinance as regards the planned signage overlay. Our planned signage overlay is an opportunity for developers and property owners, when they meet the requirements, the acreage requirements of our zoning ordinance, and the zoning requirements of our zoning ordinance, they can devise a signage plan that will be specific to their development. We've seen this with the avenues development, where they have a planned signage overlay. It addresses unique signs that they have. The same with Stones River Mall, the same with the Militancy Medical Center, and more recently, the Amazon Fulfillment Center. These are all large developments. They all have unique campus needs that the planned signage overlay allows them to address. We have found that oftentimes when we are working with the applicants, they have professional staff. The professional staff has very clear understanding of the type of signs they need, and are able to create a plan. But often, in hindsight, they want to have flags. Almost every development, whether it's in a planned sign overlay or not, wants to have some sort of flag, particularly if it's a large development or a large employer or such. So we identified a need to consider an amendment to our planned signage overlay that allows any development that is in a planned sign overlay to have flag signs as if it were in the underlying zoning that it would otherwise be regulated under. For instance, the Amazon Fulfillment Center is zoned heavy industrial. Under the heavy industrial classification, it would be permitted to have three signs, or, excuse me, flags. Typically, you'll see these as the American flag, the state flag, and maybe another flag. And we want them to be able to have that. So we want any, any developer that would otherwise be regulated by a planned sign overlay to have that opportunity. So we are proposing this amendment to you to amend our zoning ordinance, to allow this to be done in a planned sign overlay. We need to conduct a public hearing and make a recommendation to our council.
Okay. Any questions? Now, I'll open the public hearing and ask for any comments. Doesn't count. Nobody coming forward? I'll close the public hearing. There's no comments or questions, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman Lamb, I'll make a motion we approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That concludes the public hearing portion of our meeting tonight. Before I go into new business, we had some members of young leadership, Rutherford here. Are you the sole survivor?
I am the sole survivor.
What is, what is your name, sir?
Carter Gordon.
Carter?
Gordon.
Carter Gordon. I'd like to welcome you tonight. I should have done that earlier, especially while your cohorts were here, but thank you for staying. They got bored and left, so. And we're getting ready, too, also. Moving on to new business, one item on the new business tonight, that is the annexation request for approximately 3.27 acres adjacent to Sinking Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. Murvisboro Water and Sewer is the applicant. Mr. Adalot?
Yes, sir. The subject property is located immediately adjacent to the existing wastewater treatment plant off of Blanton Drive, across the river from our mayor's house on, in Riverbend. The subject property consists of 3.27 acres that is being acquired by the Water and Sewer Department for the construction of a new headworks facility. And please, I don't know exactly what a headworks facility is, but it does have to do with the treatment of sanitary waste, our sewage. And it is a very important element in our community. We want to have this inside our city. The rest of the plant is in the city. We want this part to be in the city as well. We need to schedule this for a public hearing. After the public hearing is scheduled, over the course of the next several weeks, Mr. Robert Lewis will be working on an annexation feasibility study and plan of services. It appears at this point, the annexation will be easy. The property is immediately contiguous with the city limits, so no other property needs to be involved. The property is in our city's urban growth boundary, and no other property owners do need to be involved. So it will be, it appears to be easy to serve. Also, because it is for, in addition to our sewer treatment plant, it won't be demanding the full range of services that a residential development might. So we need to schedule this for a public hearing. It appears that January 9th of 2013 will be an appropriate date. We'll be ready, and we would recommend that we have that date.
January 9th, 2013, seems like it ought to be about 10 years away or something, but I think it's right here upon us. There's no further comments or questions, we're ready for a motion. Move and set at public hearing.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Mr. Adalot, any staff reports and other business?
Yes, sir. There is one matter I want to bring to the planning commission's attention, and also to the public who may be watching. On next Monday at 6:30 PM at the Sportscom, the planning staff will be hosting a neighborhood meeting for the purpose of allowing the public to have an opportunity to look at the plans for the proposed Walmart that's proposed for Airport Road and Memorial Boulevard. We expect to have an open-house type meeting. The meeting will start at 6:30. People who are interested are welcome to stop by anytime between 6:30 and 8:30 to take a look at the plans. We expect to have several different stations set up. One station will be set up to deal with traffic issues, access, and transportation, so people can see what kind of roadway improvements are being proposed, and have an opportunity to see for themselves. Another station will be for storm water management and drainage, flooding. We'll have another station for landscaping, buffering, and screening. We have another for building appearance. We'll have another station set up for general site plan issues, to just get everything else we've missed. Those who are interested, who come, will be encouraged to leave written comments at the meeting, but they'll have an opportunity to log on to our website, and we'll give them an email address as well to contact us with comments. All the comments that we receive, we're gonna forward to the planning commission, so we're gonna have a pretty quick, ask for a pretty quick turnover. We will be getting to you a copy of a question-and-answer pamphlet that we're preparing. It'll also be posted on the internet, giving some basic information about the plan. And we will be getting to you in a couple of days, before the neighborhood meeting, a copy of the site plan, so that you'll be able to see it, and you'll be knowledgeable about it, because when the calls start coming in, and we want you guys to know what people are calling about, and have the ability to have a resource at hand to answer questions. We'll send you that same question-and-answer pamphlet as well. So I want to give you a status report on that, and invite anybody in the public who's interested in coming, 6:30 at the Sportscom, 6:30 to 8:30. That'll be Monday night, December 10th.
Okay, Mr. Adalot, anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Ives?
No, sir.
Any other business before this commission? If not, we stand adjourned.